Good afternoon. Welcome to the November 2nd, 2022 meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask for the roll call.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim. Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Weiss.
Please stand for the invocation. Tonight, we have Captain Mel Vernon of the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians providing our invocation.
I'd like to read a Native American prayer from Chief John Yellowhawk. Oh, great spirit, whose voice we hear in the winds and whose breath gives life to all the world, hear us. We are small and weak. We need your strength and wisdom. Let us walk in beauty and make our eyes ever behold the red and purple sunset. Make our hands respect the things you have made and our ears sharp to hear your voice. Make us wise so that we may understand the things you have taught the people. Let us learn the lessons you have hidden in every leaf and rock. We seek strength, not to be superior to our brothers and sisters, but to fight for, but to fight our greatest enemy, ourselves. Make us always ready to come to you with clean hands and straight eyes, so when life fades as the fading sunset, our spirit will come to you without shame. Thank you.
Thank you. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. May be seated. Do we have the Humane Society? Yeah, there you, there you are.
Hello, everybody.
Well, this is November's Pet of the Month with San Diego Humane Society and SPCA.
So this is Ms. Dakota. She's about four years young. She came into our Oceanside campus. Her owners actually were moving into a rental property that didn't allow dogs, which unfortunately is very common, as we all know. So they did surrender her over to us. She did live with a couple other dogs. Thank you. She did live with some other dogs, and she did quite well with them, but at the shelter she's shown a little bit of stress, you know, with the bigger dogs, and it's a stressful environment. But we have noticed that she's done some neutral dog walks with other dogs and has done well. It's kind of like us. We can't go home with anybody, right? So we need to meet those potential people to get used to. She's been really lovely with me. This is the third time I've taken her out, and she's gotten really, come on, she's gotten really, hey, there, show, no, she wants to play with that, though, because she's like, who is that? She's doing really well. I'm very surprised. I love it. She's grown really attached to me already. If you notice, I've been sitting here, and she, I just touch her, and she sits down. I mean, and then she'll just sit there and lay. So I think she'd be really well in a home that will give her the couch, hang out with her, take her for walks. If you do have kids, I'd say probably older kids, like anybody that's 12, a little bit older, just because she wasn't exposed to kids in her other home. We just want to make her comfortable as possible. She is already microchipped, she's already spayed, she's already vaccinated. She is waiting for a person or a couple people or whoever would like to take her home along with our other many dogs that we have. We have a lot of animals right now at our Oceanside campus, actually, all of our locations, especially a lot of dogs and a lot of small pets. So if you know anybody that is looking to adopt or even somebody that wants to foster volunteer an animal, that would be lovely, because we definitely need the help. And of course, if we have fosters, them opening up a home into another, one of our pets can open up another shelter space for another pet. So we are definitely here to help you all, and we also have a food pantry for anybody that knows anybody that is hurting right now in times for food. You can come into our campus, any one of our campuses, anytime, big Tuesday through Sunday, from 10 to 6 to pick up any cat food or dog food, anything that you may need. And we also have low-cost resources, vaccines. So if you go onto our website, sdhumane.org, you can make an appointment for vaccines. Now, we're doing vaccines for cats and dogs, rabies, the DHPP, Boratella for dogs, and then the FER CP for cats. I know it all means charval to all of you, but some of you may know what I'm talking about. But they're $12 apiece, so that's a lot cheaper than making an appointment at your vet, getting the vaccines, and then walking out, spending over $100. We will go ahead and help you out, and $12 apiece for whatever you need. And we also are doing $25 microchips. And microchips are great ways just to, if your animal does end up in the shelter and they lose their collar on the way, of course, having a microchip and making sure that it's updated. Anytime an animal comes into our shelter, the first thing we do is get a scanner, scan them if they have a microchip, call the microchip company, call the microchip company, we get the owner's information, we call them, say, hey, come get Fluffy, Fluffy is here waiting for you, and your animal will go home. So of course, that's also really good, too, if anybody ever steals your pet. And then we also have a lot of spay and neuter resources as well, so please check out the shelter, support your local animal shelter and your animals. And of course, we're here for you all in the community of Oceanside and all over San Diego County, San Diego Humane Society. Come look at Dakota. Her adoption fee is $100. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for visiting us, Dakota. Thank you. And no, Angie, you can't take her home.
Yes, you can.
Angie, you can't take her home. Well, next on our agenda is a proclamation, and it is National Native American Heritage Month 2022. So if we could have the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians, members of the tribe, come forward. We have a few members here this evening. It's really wonderful. And the person who's going to be introducing everybody after I do the proclamation is Captain Mel Vernon. His title is captain, but it's basically the chairperson for the tribe. And I'm going to go ahead and...
Are you going to do this?
Yeah. And then I'm going to give you the...
And I'm going to pass the mic down.
This relationship that we have with the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians is very, very special. All right. Proclamation in honor of National Native American Heritage Month. Whereas, like our great nation, the history and culture of our local community and state began with the history and culture of Native Americans and indigenous peoples. And whereas, we acknowledge, Payom Kawicham, the people of the West, have called the North San Diego County and Cappelton Region home for more than 10,000 years. And today, known as a Luiseño people, are represented by seven bands and tribes: La Hoya, Paula, Palma, Pechanga, Rincon, San Luis Rey, and Suboba. And whereas, the contributions of Native Americans have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, the customs and traditions of Native Americans are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States and our city of Oceanside. And whereas, evidence of tribal cultural resources found throughout our region prove that the Luiseños have a long history and a rich culture that existed before first European contact, arrival of the Spanish missionaries, Mexican rule, and the establishment of the United States. And the Luiseños have survived every challenge, generation after generation, adapting to meet changing times and circumstances with great optimism. And whereas, we celebrate our commitments to respect and preserve the rich Native American history and traditions in our city of Oceanside. And whereas, the most sacred responsibility of the Luiseño people is to preserve and protect their ancestral territory. And the city of Oceanside has been an exceptional partner to the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians in a unified commitment to honor and protect historical and cultural sites. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther C. Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim November 2022 as National Native American Heritage Month in the city of Oceanside. Continue our commitment to work with the San Luis Rey Band tribe in the preservation of our shared cultural heritage and urge all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And I did pronounce that word right, right? Payom Kawicham.
Thank you, Esther, and this is for you, a gift from us traditionally, and it's been an honor to be up here. I don't know exactly how long it's been, but I've been through a couple mayors through here, and it's, it's, it's always an honor and appreciated to hear from, from the San Luis Rey Band and the community, to be a part of the community and to, to take our responsibility of representing our culture that was here for so long and to be a good partner with everyone. Also, so I'm going to pass the mic down, and that way, Carrie, you want to get in this side also? We're just going to pass the mic down this way and tell them who you are. And thanks, everyone, for showing up today. Thank you.
Thanks, Captain Vernon. I'm Carrie Lopez. I'm a senior advisor to the tribal council and just wanted to thank all the tribal members who came here. You each probably represent about 200 of our fellow members each. There's a lot of us around, and it's important to recognize that our tribe is here today, not just in the past.
That's hello, everyone, in the Luiseño language known as Chantila. Just wanted to say thank you for having us here this evening and recognizing our tribe's commitment to protecting our cultural heritage and being a partner with the city of Oceanside. My name is Mary Lopez Kiefer, and I'm also a senior advisor to the tribal council, and it gives me great honor to be.
My name is Diana Cordell. I'm an elder, and I'm also with the cultural committee and representing and supporting my brother and all our tribal members here. So I want to thank the city of Oceanside and Esther for recognizing us. Thank you.
Wait, oops. Master Weaver.
Oh, yeah. I don't consider myself a master weaver, but I'm still learning, but we do teach and, yes, in the language, et cetera. So thank you. Noche luvé.
Hello, everyone. My name is Trent Moran. I'd just like to say thank you to Esther. It's an honor to be here. Thank you, guys.
You know, this thing is powerful, you know? Hello, my name is Justine Lunabo, and thank you for having us here. We got some rain, which was awesome. Anyways.
I'm her daughter. I'm Carol Hernandez, and I'm happy to be here with everyone.
I'm Christina Anaya. This is my daughter Grace Pa'u, my daughter Faith Anaya. We're tribal members and just want to say thank you for allowing us to be here. It's an honor.
Notong, Renet, Alvera, and Guiano. I'm a tribal member of San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians, and I am so thankful for this honor.
Thank you, everyone. I'm a mic guy. I'm a tribal member. Yeah, I do a lot of different things with the tribe, so, and I drum and everything else for it, so, thank you again.
My name is Roberta Estrada, and I'm on the tribal council, and I want to thank all the people here in the city of Oceanside for supporting us as much as they do.
I'm Shelley Porrit, and I am also a tribal member. I just wish to thank everyone that has come out.
And this relationship is so critical, especially with respect to protecting the cultural resources. And could you say a little bit more about that?
Yes, thank you. Well, we all know, or we all don't know, living in Oceanside, that the Luiseño people were named after the San Luis Rey Mission. And to say that 10,000 years of living a sustainable life here in this beautiful area, of course, left a lot of artifacts and ancestors here. And so when we do new development, that's part of the EIR, to make sure that we can preserve and protect some of our ancestors. And, and I would say that with the people we have, including Mary and Carrie and others involved, that we, we do a pretty good job. And it's not an easy job, as you can tell, when, when the environmental or somebody doesn't want a project coming in, but we are definitely doing our part to preserve what we can. Also, I was going to share that we have a November 12th event coming up to acknowledge our tribe. If we can get that camera on that little table, I don't know if anybody's back there behind the curtain. This is, it's, I don't know if we can move that a little bit better down below. This is Spirit of the Valley, and we brought people together with, through ACE, Studio ACE down there, and bringing the people in the valley closer together as well as Oceanside to come out and visit. You'll see my sister doing some basket weaving classes and, and other, other things that culturally connected to our, to our community. And I think that's, connected to our community means our, our community is connected and it's bringing it all together. And if we can make it out there, it'd be great. Thank you.
And when is it?
November 12th. November 12th.
November 12th at?
11 to 3. 11 to 3 at Heritage Park.
Yay. Okay. Well, thank you very much, and I hope that you all will consider attending some of the activities that will, that are happening here in Oceanside and elsewhere in honor of our Native American history and ancestors.
I have to say, I have to say this. We're still here.
Yes. Thank you so much. So we're going to take a picture?
Wait. Let's maybe get closer. You two should be in the middle. Taking a picture.
Closed session report, Mr. Mellon.
Thank you. The council met in closed session to discuss the status of negotiations involving the Oceanside Police Management Association. There is no action under the Brown Act to report on that item at this time. The council also met to discuss a anticipated litigation involving one case, the contract claims filed by PCN III dated May 3rd and August 27th, 2022. Council did meet, give direction on that item, but there's no reportable action under the Brown Act at this point. Finally, the council met on the matter of Aguirre versus Manson Construction, and again, there's no reportable action on that item tonight.
Thank you. On consent calendar items, they're numbered four through 14. Is there any request from the public to speak on any one of these items?
There is no request from the public for consent calendar.
Okay, there's a request to pull 14. A motion on the balance?
A motion.
Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion and second. Please vote.
FIVE vote.
Thank you. Item number 14 is adoption of the resolution of intent declaring its intent to establish city of Oceanside Community Facilities District Number 2022-1, Public Safety Services, the CFD, to authorize a levy of a special tax on property within the CFD to pay the cost of providing public safety services. Your question?
Yes, there's a lot of misinformation going around stating that we're trying to tax the entire community with this, and I think I'd like to hear further explanation and clarification for the public.
Right. I think the report did mention something about the CFD's boundaries are, are similar to the boundaries of the city, but then went on to describe what, what, what is really anticipated here.
Yes.
Gossman?
Honorable mayor, members of the council, Michael Gossman, Assistant City Manager. So it is, I think, maybe if there is confusion, I had not heard that, but if there is confusion, it may be related to what the mayor just stated, and also that it is called a citywide services CFD. Only new developments that fall within a certain criteria would ever be annexed into it. The reason why it's called citywide is that the boundaries encompass of what's annexable, the entire city, but only new developments that meet certain criteria would fall with, would be, would be annexed into the CFD in the future. Currently, all we're talking about is the development at Alta Oceanside.
Okay, so it's not a tax on the entire city?
Correct. It is not a tax on the entire city.
Thank you.
Is that a motion? Move approval? Any other comments from the council? I see none. Is there a second? There's a motion and second. Please vote.
Four one. Jensen, no.
Thank you. Let's go to item number 16. See Kathy Canane, Oceanside Turkey Trot. Move Your Feet Before You Eat Foundation. Yeah, leave the turkey alone.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and council members. Kathy Canane, organizer of the Oceanside Turkey Trot and executive director of the Move Your Feet Before You Eat Foundation, and let me get this going. So we're back, celebrating 17 years of trotting here in downtown Oceanside and helping put Oceanside on the map as one of a great place to live, work, and play for healthy families. Sorry. Great. So one of the highlights of the past 16 years was last year, we were blessed to be featured on Fox News National Weather Station on Thanksgiving morning for five minutes. So I'm going to give you a little clip of that, because it's a lot of fun.
Name, she's the co-founder of Oceanside Turkey Trot and race director, Kathy. Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you for joining us. 16 years ago, inspired to start this turkey trot. Why?
We want people to move their feet before they eat.
That's the best answer and the shortest answer I've ever received.
Yes, I love that. Okay, so Kathy, how long is this year's trot?
We have a five mile, and we have a 5K, and then we have a couple of kids' races, a one mile and a one-fifth mile.
Is there one that you find a little more popular than the others? I mean, I'm sure that there is that competitive racing angle, but maybe a bit of a tradition for, for many who, who take part in your turkey trot?
I'd say 80% of our participants are just large families that are getting out there on Thanksgiving morning to move their feet before they eat and just have a, a better start to the day. And of course, we have 70-degree weather here in Oceanside today. It is spectacular.
She's rubbing it in just a little bit.
I know. You can't beat that weather. Okay, Kathy, so can people walk or is it all running?
Oh, no. 80% of them, like, walk jog. We have about 20% that go faster than, like, 15-minute pace.
Okay. Not bad. I could do that. I could do that.
I just, I feel like the climate out there in California sort of yields to like a healthier lifestyle. People like to...
All right, there it is. We had so much fun making a little commercial for Oceanside. Great day. So just kind of what it is, it's a run, walk, or trot. About 80% walk or they walk jog. The proceeds benefit schools and nonprofits that serve the Oceanside residents, and this year we have about 87 on our pull-down list, and our goal is to raise about 27,000. We spend a lot of money on marketing to build this event up, and right now, we're at 2,500 people, which is about a third of what we're expecting, and it's very exciting. We have 136 teams that are registered. We have 38% that have never run the event before, and we have about 30% that are from outside the county already. So we're off to a great start. New this year, we're going to have the Bib pickup. When runners register, they get a bib and they get a T-shirt, and they're going to pick it up down at Junior Sale on Wednesday. And then the day of the event, we have a 5K run walk, we have a five-mile run. Our senior mile now goes with the kids, one mile, and our registration on race day is right here at the city civic center's parking structure. We're thankful for our sponsors for the past 16 years. We're so thankful the city of Oceanside has stepped up this year in both financial support and marketing. The residents are already up at least 20% over last year, so we're thrilled to see that. The county of San Diego came on board to help us out, and then our returning sponsors help us to continue. We have a costume contest. We give out a prize purse of gift certificates to local restaurants and businesses. It says 65 teams on here right now, but I know we have 163. We're very proud of the fact that on race morning, we get live coverage for at least two or three stations every year. This is our course, for those of you who are wondering where it is. We start at the civic center and finish at the pier. It's great fun. It's one of the fastest courses in California because it's a little bit downhill. We have plenty of parking, thanks to the city, but in addition, we do a bus shuttle that goes from Miracosta Learning Center and the Liv Well Center. These are our jazzy new medals this year. I have one right here on my chest, but we'll check for that later. $5 of your entry fee can go to a school or charity that serves Oceanside residents. The Move Your Feet Before You Eat Foundation, our goal is to help solve the healthcare crisis one step at a time. Thanks for having me tonight.
Thank you, Kathy. Do we have Shannon Ko here? Shannon Ko? This is item 16A, on advanced, under advanced request to speak.
Thank you, Mary Sanchez, and city council members for allowing me to speak to you today. My name is Shannon Ko, and I'm a homeowner at the Ventana Townhome Community at El Corzo. We've brought this issue to the attention of the council before. Since then, our community has made changes. No, that's right. Okay. To help alleviate our parking problems, utilizing all our garage parking, managing the limited guest parking, hiring a patrol company to manage the parking. But in fact, we still do not have enough parking spaces to accommodate our community. We've heard time and time again, the city tell us, the homeowners, that we should have known that only two drivers can live in each of our homes, each of the 70 large three- and four-bedroom homes. Well, I believe the city should have known when they approved Ventana Project, to only allow two drivers per home was irresponsible in the light of the housing crisis. The city approved the Ventana Project of large three- and four-bedroom homes, knowing that there's a housing shortage, knowing that there's a homeless problem, knowing that there's an affordability problem. And the city chose to approve and leave 176 bedrooms forever vacant and unusable, while spending $3.5 million on a 60-bed affordable housing development three miles from our community. And the city approved $1.88 million to purchase Ocean Shores Campus with an estimated cost of an additional $3.1 million to convert and develop a 50-bed homeless shelter within a mile of our community. So for clarity, the city is spending $8.5 million for 110 beds and leaving forever vacant and unusable 176 bedrooms at our community, leaving the homeowners to suffer. Now, we should have known, we should have known, that's what they say, they meaning you. But I didn't know the pandemic would devastate my children financially. I didn't know that there was going to be soaring inflation. I didn't know that there's a looming recession. I didn't know that there would be 30 applications for every available rental. I didn't know that. The city of Oceanside is doing amazing things, amazing improvements, and I'm excited about all the good things ahead. I love Oceanside, but people are moving away because they cannot afford to live here. My children can't afford to live here. They might move away. I might have to move away. We are asking the city to allow us to help family and friends to help ourselves financially in this uncertain economy by providing reasonable parking on the public streets around our community to unlock some of the 176 vacant and unusable bedrooms. It's the right thing to do, and it doesn't cost the city any money. In fact, the city could create revenue by requiring paid overnight residential parking permits on the street. So I'd like to get a little personal for a moment. I'm a single mother, and as many single people, I struggle financially, now more than ever. I have three young adult children. Also, I own a four-bedroom home. My children are not able to afford a home right now, and actually, they can't even find a home in Oceanside. And actually, they can't even find a home in Oceanside. Because of the parking restrictions, I am unable to offer the two vacant unusable rooms in my home to my children for a safe place to live. I'm heartbroken that I cannot offer that to them, but there's just no parking. There's no parking within three miles of our community. Allowing parking on the wide public street will not only help my children, but it'll help me financially because they'll pay rent and I'll be able to pay my bills, easing the financial struggle for me. Seems reasonable, seems like a solution in these hard times. This is not only my story, it's the story of many of the residents in our community. The details are different, of course, but we all have rooms that we cannot use and we can't use them because there's a parking issue. If the city council continues to deny public parking, therefore exasperating the affordable housing issue, we will continue to escalate the issue. We've heard the city tell us that we cannot park on the public street because of the arena and the apartment construction. The fact is, there's two other access points to the construction site that do not involve our street, and there is plenty of room to allow parking with no disruption to the construction. Dr. Hugh LaBounty Road is a very wide road. And I have a few photos from just today. Normally, construction does not park on our street. But today, this was last week, a couple weeks ago, these are three large trucks parked on the street for three days, no problem with construction. This is today, I think they had a party or something. But parking all down the street, so plenty of room, more construction parking over, not allowed, so we need to go there, ticketed, more parking. And just to show you that there's no problem with construction, here's a big, huge truck pulling in, parking all along the street. He's pulling in the construction site, literally no problem at all. Now generally, there is plenty of parking here on the construction side.
Could you conclude your comments? Could you work on concluding your comments?
We're just asking that we get parking approved on Dr. Hugh LaBounty. We have a petition that we've submitted and we'll continue to fight for this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a quick question for her. Does your HOA provide a shuttle down to the Sprinter Station at Oceanside Boulevard as it's required to do?
We could walk to the Sprinter Station, but most of our community members are military and they go all the way to Camp Pendleton.
The HOA is supposed to provide a shuttle as part of one of the project requirements.
I've never heard that and it's not in our HOA docs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is Susanna Medina here? Okay, I'll ask again. All right. Item number 15 is approval of a purchase and sale agreement with El Corazon IDRT LLC for disposition of 51.1 acres of Oceanside Boulevard commercial land at El Corazon for the development of a mixed-use R&amp;D industrial and retail development consisting of approximately 533,700 building square feet at a purchase price prescribed, which is zero, by the commercial DDA. Authorization for an expense in the amount not to exceed $15,000 for closing costs applicable to the sale of the real property. Authorization for the city manager to execute the purchase and sale agreement for the property along with any respective documents requiring the city manager's signature that may be necessary to close escrow for the sale of the real property. Upon receipt of the supporting documents and authorization for the city manager or his designee or designees to carry out the terms of the purchase and sale agreement and close escrow for the disposition of the real property. And we have a report by real estate manager, Vicky Gutierrez.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Vicky Gutierrez, real estate manager for the Public Works Property Management Division. So I'm going to jump right into the presentation. Thank you for introducing the item to it. So I'm first going to provide you some background on this item. On June 3rd... Let me give you the... cooperate. There you go. On June 3rd, 2009, the city council approved the El Corazon specific plan governing the development of the 465-acre El Corazon site. In January 2013, the city council unanimously approved two DDAs with Sudbury Development, Inc. These DDAs establish the terms in which the certain portions of the land at El Corazon may be developed and acquired by Sudbury through lease or purchase. The recreational DDA allows for development and lease of a portion of El Corazon recreational designated land, and the actions approved at that time included a lease agreement with SoCal SCLP for the development of the existing SoCal soccer complex. The SoCal lease expires October 31st of 2039 and has two 10-year options to extend if exercised to October 31st, 2059. Upon expiration of the lease, the land reverts back to the city. The commercial DDA allows for the development of Village Commercial, Oceanside Boulevard Commercial, which we're talking about tonight, and the hotel designated land areas. Sudbury fulfilled its recreational DDA requirements in 2014, and at this time, they're proposing to proceed with additional portions of the commercial development at El Corazon. In August of 2022, Sudbury submitted a request to purchase in fee the Oceanside Boulevard commercial land consisting of 51.1 acres of vacant land. The commercial DDA provides that Sudbury may ground lease or purchase the portions of the commercial premises, subject to certain conditions. The DDA further states a preference for Sudbury to enter into a ground lease rather than purchase in fee for the commercial premises. However, the commercial DDA does provide that Sudbury has a right to purchase as opposed to ground lease under certain conditions. To do so, Sudbury must demonstrate that a ground lease of the development sites would be economically disadvantageous. The term economically disadvantageous is defined within the DDA, and this would apply if it's determined that commercial tenants, users for the proposed development would be unwilling to enter into a long-term ground lease agreement, or if the ability to procure institutional financing utilizing a ground lease is diminished, or financing terms provided are mutually less favorable to Sudbury for development on a ground lease as opposed to fee purchase. The commercial DDA sets forth a process for determining whether a lease would be considered economically disadvantageous. So per the DDA, if one of the five pre-approved qualified financial experts determines that a lease is economically disadvantageous, then Sudbury has the option of purchasing the designated land as opposed to leasing it. So Sudbury does not have the right to purchase any recreational land, nor are they requesting to do so. Sudbury has provided a letter from JLL, one of the pre-approved experts within the DDA, and the letter concludes that it would be economically disadvantageous to ground lease the OB commercial land for development as proposed for the mixed-use R&amp;D industrial and retail project, which I'm going to continue to refer as commercial project for you throughout my presentation. Per the DDA, the determination of the selected pre-approved expert is final. Therefore, the city can't require that Sudbury lease the OB commercial land due to the expert determination. The commercial DDA provides that the ground lease rent and/or the lease or the purchase price for the commercial premises is to be determined by utilizing a land valuation formula, which is defined within the DDA. The land valuation purchase price is determined by computing the target return on cost that's no less than 10.5% in order to compute the land residual value. The return on cost is calculated by dividing the net operating income by the total project cost. If the land residual value is less than 10.5% for that calculation, then no rent or value is applicable. In order to calculate the land residual value, Sudbury is required to submit detailed performance for the project and for further review. But to summarize those points I've just made, the previously approved commercial DDA establishes a formula for determining the price of the property. Sudbury and its S&amp;E are not achieving the required return on cost formula set forth within the commercial DDA, therefore no purchase price is applicable to the OB commercial The depiction above is our El Corazon site in the center and surrounding area. The El Corazon specific plan area is on the board. The site area that we're talking about tonight is the OB commercial land, Oceanside Boulevard commercial land, which is at the bottom, right-hand side, and red. That is the area that we are talking about tonight for purchase. This is a site plan that Sudbury has provided to us for the mixed residential R&amp;D and retail project, and I'm going to go ahead and pass on that and give you a little bit more explanation. I'll come back to this depiction so that I can describe to you a little bit more about the individual buildings that are within that. So the following is a summary of the commercial project and proposed buildings that are planned within this area and requested to be purchased from the city. The buyer is El Corazon IDRT LLC, and Sudbury is a managing member of that entity. The total project acreage is 51.1 acres of OB commercial land. The total building area that's being proposed is 533,700 square feet, and it includes 34,600 square feet of unoccupied equipment mezzanine space. And the use again is, we call it mixed use because it's got a combination of types of buildings there, so R&amp;D, industrial, and retail. The purchase price again is zero pursuant to the DDA. And prior to closing of escrow by Sudbury, the entitlements for the commercial project must be approved by the city of Oceanside in its land regulatory capacity, in its land-used regulatory capacity. I'm going to go back to this slide for you, and I'm just going to describe each of the areas. So I'm going to start at the top left-hand quadrant, which is brown, and that is going to be a build-to-suit building for Ionis Pharmaceuticals, Inc. The building size will be approximately 251,600 square feet. And again, part of that building, 34,600 of it, will be unoccupied equipment mezzanine space. The next building I'll describe to you is right below that in purple, and that building is going to be a speculative R&amp;D with limited warehouse distribution, and that's approximately 182,000 square feet. On the right-hand side of the depiction is a yellow section, and that will be another, a speculative R&amp;D with limited warehouse distribution space, and it's approximately 64,300 square feet. And then the last area is the front area. It's hardly, you can hardly tell the color, but it's a light blue, and that area is basically the speculative retail pad area. There will be retail sales there, approximately four fast food restaurants with drive-throughs, a gas station with a car wash, and that total area will have approximately 35,800 square feet. Right now, there are no tenants identified for those areas to date, but they are currently marketing the area. So as part of the construction related to the proposed development, Sudbury will be permitted to dispose of soil extracted and removed from the commercial project area to designate a disposal site within El Corazon as we determine. The buyer is required to prepare a rough grading plan for the soil disposal, and the city will have to approve that prior to any dirt being moved. Sudbury will also be required to mix and grade any relocated soil pursuant to the rough grading plan at the disposal location. And the soil will be disposed in a manner that aligns with the future park development plans, and Sudbury is responsible for all costs related to these requirements, and that is pursuant to the purchase and sale agreement. So the city commissioned Kaiser Marston Associates, and I'm going to refer to them as KMA throughout the rest of my analysis, to independently evaluate Sudbury's proposal and ensure compliance with the DDA, which included determination of land value, if any, and what Sudbury can expect to pay per the DDA terms, potential ground lease versus fee purchase, and preparation of an economic benefits analysis of the commercial project. Sudbury submitted a performance to KMA for the proposed development, demonstrating that the DDA's specified 10.5% return on cost had not been met for the proposed development. The estimated return on cost for this commercial project is 7.5%. Therefore, no land value or ground lease rent may be calculated or assessed for the OB commercial land. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about Building A. That is the build-to-suit portion of the project that they're proposing, and they have entered into a long-term build-to-suit ground lease agreement with Ionis Pharmaceuticals, Inc., for a 10-year term, or excuse me, for a 20-year term. The ground lease agreement requires the installation of significant and specialized improvements within the building to accommodate the tenant. And upon operation, Ionis will generate approximately 200 new jobs, a majority of those holding six-figure incomes. This next part of my analysis, I'm going to share with you the economic benefits to the city. This page illustrates direct benefits to the city. We have approximately 710,000 annually coming to the city resulting from recurring tax revenues to the city as detailed below. And you'll see kind of a breakdown, property taxes versus taxes in lieu, sales tax, and Measure X. And approximately 782 direct jobs will be generated to the city. So there are also one-time benefits to the city. The estimated one-time economic benefits, KMA values, estimates the value from construction of the commercial project will generate 270.4 million in economic output, 93.4 million in payroll, and approximately 1,586 construction-related jobs captured within San Diego County. In addition, we have estimated annual recurring benefits to the city. KMA estimates the annual recurring income from operations of the commercial project to generate 121.6 million in economic output, 93.7 million in annual payroll, and 1,480 full-time equivalent employees captured within San Diego County. And that would be, again, those benefits recurring. So the economic benefits that I previously stated are solely from the commercial project that I've just shared with you tonight and are beyond what the city has received from the previous transaction entered into with Sudbury. Few of the previous projects we've entered into include the SoCal Sports Complex, the Front Wave Arena, which is currently under construction, the mixed-use residential project, which is also currently under construction. And I point those out to you because the city's received considerable estimated economic benefits, and I'm just going to name a few. There's more in our staff report that was included with this item. But the annual estimated economic benefits to the city were 984,000 from the arena and the mixed-use project, and that includes tax revenue. Annual revenue from operations from those two projects to generate 39.4 million in economic output, 15.2 million in payroll, and 263 jobs in the county. Also, a construction of a parking facility to be shared with Park Site 1 and valued at $5.5 million. Annual rent and maintenance expenses paid by Sudbury for the new parking lot of about $450,000, excuse me, $450,000, and in addition of two new multipurpose fields. So that concludes my presentation. The recommendation is to approve a purchase and sale agreement with El Corazon IDRT LLC for the disposition of 51.1 acres of land at the Oceanside Boulevard commercial designated land for the development of the mixed-use R&amp;D industrial and retail development with approximately 533,700 building square feet at a purchase price prescribed by the commercial DDA. Authorize an expense in an amount not to exceed $15,000 for closing costs. Authorize the city manager to execute the purchase and sale agreement for the property along with any respective documentation. Upon receipt of all supporting documents, and authorize the city manager or his designee to carry out the terms of the purchase and sale agreement and close escrow for the disposition of the real property. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
We have five speakers registered for this item.
Okay.
Our first speaker is George Jay, to be followed by John Granahan, to be followed
Greetings, esteemed Mayor Sanchez and members of the Oceanside City Council. This is quite an extraordinary revelation for me. I'm a resident of the Oceana Senior Citizens Community, which is adjacent to the El Corazon Park. I absolutely adore this park. I feel it's so underutilized and really the planning that's gone into the development of the, let's say, commercial developers where we're... of the, let's say, commercial developers, where we're basically handing them a lot of land for very little money. We're really paying to convey land to them. It's great that it's going to develop income, but I think it's vital that the city council put documentation together that the El Corazon Park, the natural habitat area, be enhanced for the use of the public, better parking facilities, better access for us senior citizens that love the park but have a very difficult time getting into it. It's closed on weekends, and it has fabulous trails, fabulous wildlife. It's a natural habitat that needs to be considered seriously for the stewardship that we living people today live for the people for tomorrow. So please, consider clauses in the conveyances to these wealthy fat cat developers. Please consider ordinances where a portion of the lease income and tax income reverts back to helping develop the El Corazon Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Granahan, to be followed by Diane Nygaard, to be followed by Joan Bachmann.
Hello. My name is John Granahan, a 22-year resident of this city, and congratulations, Councilman Rodriguez, on the newest member to your family. I was missing the last meeting. My neighbor used to be Jack Feller, and we'd look down the hill at this spot that we're looking at, and I always talked to him about, there's a spot in San Luis Obispo where the main street of town backs up against this little creek. I'm talking about across the street, but a little creek that would be such a great area for developing for coffee shops and et cetera, and that's never happened. But right across the street, some poor guy doesn't have the advantage of the expert that Sudbury has, and he's gone ahead with developing across the street. And the original agreement, just sitting here, I'm for another issue here, but the original agreement, it seems like it was to lease property. And you can't blame Sudbury. They put in the thing saying, oh, we have a person that we found that says it's not feasible economically to lease it. So that brain trust back in 2009 agreed with that, and so was Jack, and I have an application for the DFA. It's called the dumbest fucker alive award, that I would like to petition the DFA commission to have it plural from this group. If you go ahead and approve this land giveaway to Sudbury, plus, thinking about the poor Ionis, they're going to be stuck in a non-bid 20-year contract with Sudbury that they have to do all the building? My gosh, I would not wish that. I'm a general contractor. I would not wish that on anybody. It's just, they might as well just own half of Ionis. I just think it's a horrible agreement, and if there's any way we can drug test some of the people that agreed to this, I would be happy to pay for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council Diane Nygaard, one of two speakers representing Friends of El Corazon. And we are not opposing the sale, but we are objecting to the city's council lack of commitment to implement the park part of the master plan for El Corazon. This community worked real hard to come up with a financing plan to pay for maintenance and operation of the park. But time after time, we see this city council ignore the financing plan and give away that revenue. Our park impact fees were supposed to have been updated years ago, but remain some of the lowest in the region. Instead of updating them, we've approved thousands of housing units without requiring those developers to pay their fair share for this park and for every other park in the city. And you've been frequently reminded of the need for more sports fields and dog parks, and instead, we've given away that incremental revenue we could have had. Naming rights were a new funding source identified in the financing plan, but who got the 15 million paid for naming rights of the Front Wave Arena? Not our city, the arena developer did. But the biggest single revenue source was lease and other income from the hotel and the two commercial areas, Village Commercial and Oceanside Boulevard Commercial. You agreed to give an unproven hotel developer six acres of parkland in addition to the six acres planned for the hotel, and that land's now been tied up for six years and still no agreement with that developer. And now, here tonight, we're selling off another piece of El Corazon for no money, but again, with no revenue stream to pay for our park. The 2005 financing study recognized it would take several years to build out the commercial spaces. But even if we assume it would take 10 years longer than they assumed back then, that lease income would provide 1.6 million per year by 2025, when the arena is operational, and 3.7 million a year when these new buildings would be occupied. The economic analysis of this sale says Oceanside will receive millions of additional revenue. We ask you tonight to dedicate the portion of that increased city revenue that was supposed to come from those leases right back to El Corazon. Show the people of this community it was not an empty promise in 2009. Show the people of this community that building a park at El Corazon is a priority of yours, and demonstrate that by committing a fair share portion of that revenue back to our park. El Corazon, a park in the heart of Oceanside. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joan Bachmann, to be followed by Joe Hill.
Hello, I'm Joan Bachmann. Sorry, clear my throat. I'm the president of Friends of El Corazon. The official Friends of El Corazon position on the Ionis Pharma facility is, after extensive research that included over 80 files of public information, a tour and follow-up information, Friends of El Corazon supports the proposed Ionis facility on El Corazon. Furthermore, we are confident that Sudbury will plant all of the landscaping that was agreed to during the tentative map approvals. That's what would be shown on those plans. Sudbury has a good track record of complying with the specific plan requirements, and we expect that to continue with each phase of this project. With that, we do have some issues with this approval, and we seek strong direction from council to staff. First off, the drive-throughs are going to be a problem due to the idling cars. The city is updating the general plan, and this will not help us meet the stated goals. It's also not the kind of pedestrian-oriented land use that makes sense across the street from the Sprinter, the station, and in the specific plan. So we'll be looking for conditions that change the way drive-throughs operate. The focus is wrong. The city should be working on building a park rather than just the commercial area. No park facilities will be built since Park One is part of the arena, not OBC. Thirteen years after adoption of the specific plan, and nothing has been built on the green part of our park on the map between this and the hotel, that's all, everything that will be approved. So your ability to get those things done will be gone. That's not serving the residents. Third, this project is moving tons of dirt. At one point, I did a calculation. It's 100 acres, eight feet deep. It's a lot of dirt. There's a scant plan that does not move the park forward. We need to use this dirt to help save future costs for the park, so it's only moved once. We brought this up regarding the arena, and now the loop road alignment is threatened because we weren't listened to. We need an actual inspired park design for Park Six, and also the open space that includes the viewpoint up near Rancho Del Oro. There's a wonderful opportunity to raise that even higher, so you can see even farther from San Jacinto to the ocean. It's an amazing viewpoint. We appreciate the discussion to move the dirt toward Park Three. Years ago, the developer asked the city for a rough grading plan for Park Three, and that didn't happen. So we don't even know if this plan that's showing up now is going to help or hurt, and those are the ball fields. So we do know our park. We know every inch of it, and we've been asking for these changes. We need actual park design, and right now, this doesn't get us there. We're not getting money for this. So all money generated on El Corazon needs to stay on El Corazon. So please give direction that moves our park forward on drive-throughs, funding high-quality park design, and ensuring we only move that dirt once. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the speakers.
That concludes. Okay. So to the council, Councilmember Weiss.
I have a question for staff. This action is specifically in regards to the disposition of the property. So we're not approving drive-throughs, we're not approving Ionis, we're not approving 533,000 square feet of building, we're not approving parking, we're approving the disposition of the property. Those other actions are going to still, the planning commission and the council will have their full discretion to approve, deny, or modify those project components at some future date. Is that correct?
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Weiss, that is absolutely correct.
Then I'll move approval, staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
No need, I'm good.
That's it? I see no other lights. It's not showing up. Sorry. Deputy Mayor Keim, did you want to speak?
I was...
There it is.
You, mayor, being the last remaining council member that approved this DDA in 2013, I wanted to hear your thoughts as we move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen.
So we're paying 15,000 in closing costs? 19,000 altogether?
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, that is an estimate. There aren't a lot of closing costs applicable. We always just put that in in case there's something that arises, but in effect, the main closing cost for this deal will be the title report, paying for the title and closing, but that, it's not a large amount. So it's far under that number.
I hope so, because if we sell something for a loss, that makes us look pretty foolish. So I mean, I would at least ask for, you know, the sale price to be the cost of the sale. That, I mean, that just seemed logical to me.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember, Councilmember Jensen, in the DDA, it specifically states, and it is a typical, it's typically that the seller pays for the owner's title report. That is a typical in every deal, unless it's negotiated otherwise, and in this deal, that is how it was set, because it wasn't predetermined that we would be selling at a low, at a no price, or we didn't know at that time. We wouldn't have known, because each deal comes forward, and then you analyze each deal. So unfortunately, it's not structured that way. So we are responsible for paying for the, for those closing costs. And we share, we share a portion of the costs, and then we pay for the owner's title report. And that's it.
Okay. And that was negotiated in 2009?
That is in our DDA. Yes, the original DDA.
All right. Thank you. You're welcome.
No other lights. My thoughts. This breaks my heart. In 1998, 99, I got a chance to meet the people who had this vision of a park at El Corazon, and many of them were leaders within the Oceana community, which basically surrounds, the communities surround El Corazon. And many of them walked even to try to get it on the ballot. It was on the ballot. Ms. Nygaard, who's here, was one of the main walkers to get it on the ballot, and I think it lost by 35 or 45 votes to basically dedicate this land as parkland, except for portions that would help generate funds to be able to develop this, these 500 acres, about half of which are able to be developed into a park for our youth. It's something back in, 24 years ago, that was recognized as a huge need, and I have to agree with the speakers that in 22 years, we've done so little to turn this into our park. We have adopted the specific plan and gotten like 100% agreement on the committee of, on El Corazon that we set up. I mean, this, we really came together on this, the council did, and somehow or other, from that time forward, things have just really fallen apart. I feel that this should have been more of a public process. This is city land. It was given to the city, one point, what is it, with 1.3, I think, something like that, million dollars. Not enough, of course, to renovate it. It was a salt, sand mine. But there were certain people that saw treasure here, a park. I think some, I think one of our former mayors, not Peter here, saw it as, you know, it's not worth anything. But we all saw something here. 51 acres, 36 can be developed, and you can't tell me it's worth $0. There is nowhere else in the county, in North County, that is in an urban area. I mean, it's unusual, highly unusual, highly valuable, millions of dollars worth, and we're not getting any benefit whatsoever. For the soccer arena, the indoor soccer arena, we at least negotiated two fields, which are still not, you know, even started. So, I mean, I don't even know if we have a twinkle in the eye for that to even begin. And we know, we know that we are so short in fields and pickleball and basketball and all of these things that our community really deserves. We've seen a turnaround in the economy for our city of Oceanside, and yet, the residents, the locals, don't seem to be able to get any benefit from that. And, you know, I'm saying these words with all due respect to staff and all due respect to our, to my colleagues here. I relied on the expertise of our staff in approving this back in 2009, 2010. I relied on it because I believed that we all had agreed on what that vision was. Apparently, there's this one little item here. Well, gee, if you generate less than 10%, you can get it for free. Who is able to generate 10% in this economy? So I guess we weren't versed enough to see far into the future, or I guess not that far, to realize this was a bad, a really bad agreement. So I do understand this is a first step, it's a two-step, right, to having a pharmaceutical here, which obviously, I mean, it sounds like a great deal, and it would be a great deal for us if it wasn't in a park. Such a pharmaceutical should be in an industrial park, an industrial park. But unfortunately, they had eyes on here, our park. And yes, there will be, have to be removal of hazardous waste, and I understand it has to be trucked to Kansas because no one else will take it, and that's where it'll be stored. Yes, it's a very reputable pharmacy, pharmaceutical, excuse me, not pharmacy, pharmaceutical. And yes, it's doing wonderful things, but this is our park. That is a dream that we adopted as a community, as a city. So as much as I would like to support staff's recommendations, I really can't. I wish there had been. I wish there had been a more of a public process, and maybe in that process, we could have come more together on what we could see there. I mean, I had envisioned sports-related kind of activity, you know, pizza, a sports store, retail, I mean, different things that you can be there all day and have all your retail needs met. And I know I have a couple of councilmen who now wish to speak. But with, you know, yes, I am a lawyer, but I was a deputy public defender. I relied on staff, on whoever we contracted, to come up with this decision. And you know what? I will share this with you. My contracts law professor, first year law school, three years, right? Law school, three years. First year law, first year, he said, okay, and he had that British accent, you know, here in San Francisco. He said, "To have a contract, you have to have an offer, acceptance, and consideration, and that consideration needs to be somehow equal." But then after that, he said, "But that's not..." But then after that, he said, "But that's not really what we're going to be talking about, because contracts are meant to be broken. The law of contracts is what you have to do, or what you do when a contract is not good for a business or a community." And I feel like this contract is not good for our community. Deputy Mayor Keim.
In 2013, I was a police officer for Oceanside, working the night shift, responding to car accidents and domestic violence calls. I didn't have any involvement in this deal, I don't like it. One thing I learned as an officer is I made mistakes, I took ownership for them. We entered into an agreement. I didn't have anything to do with that, neither did three other members on council. I, I'm very concerned that we're going to do this, make these statements, take ownership of that. If it was a bad deal, that's the deal you made, Mayor. We are, have to follow through with our legal obligation, whether I like it or not. Okay? So, I have to support this motion, and maybe the city attorney can expand on this. What are our options legally right now? Can we break this contract legally?
My opinion is to, is in support of the staff recommendation, that this action is in furtherance of the DDA that was previously approved, and we are contractually required to follow through. So, you will have your opportunity to review the land use applications when they come through. This is, as Councilmember Weiss noted in the beginning of this discussion, this is the disposition of the land only, and a closing of escrow will be ultimately contingent upon the approval of the land use development application. So...
Okay. So, I think it's very disingenuous to be able, come up here and say no, knowing that four councilmembers are going to do what they're legally required to do, still be able to say that you stood up for the citizens, when that is not the case. I will do one thing, and I'd like to ask the maker of the motion. I would like staff to take some steps towards actually getting our park done. Can staff bring back a financing plan to keep money in our park within 90 days?
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, yes, we would be happy to present the council, City Council with some options for furtherance of financing the park development.
With that added clause, then I will support, I will support the motion begrudgingly, because that's our legal obligation.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yeah, I wasn't going to talk, but then the mayor spoke, so I have to. I couldn't agree with the mayor more that this decision, this contract that was approved, was a failure to you as Oceanside residents, and she is the only councilmember that is sitting on this diet, that approved that failed plan. That finance plan was a failure. It is a joke. You cannot plan retail that is not near major transportation lines. I'm in real estate, and I could, I could see this a mile away. This is a failure to think that retail will be built here to help fund and finance a park. The problem we have here is failed leadership over the last two decades in the city of Oceanside that did not prepare and plan. We just built a $40 million aquatic center on El Corazon, because the political will was there. We paid off our civic center, no mortgage, and then we had to finance that to build a $40 million aquatic center. If the people wanted a park and the political will was there, we could have built this park three times over, four times over. But the political will was not there, and the priorities were out of whack. So, because of that failed plan, we stand here before you today. I wish we could do these ideas that you brought forth, but we can't, because we agreed to something many years ago, and there's only one person responsible for that on this diet, and that's Mayor, on this diet, and that's Mayor Sanchez. So, I support the original motion. I think we have a lot of priorities as a city with infrastructure, with existing parks, and I think we need to prioritize those before we go on and allocate more funding and more spending. Thank you.
So, that must mean a no on developing El Corazon. Okay. I voted for the funding. It was brought to me by our experts, and unfortunately, our experts were wrong. I am not an expert in finance. I'm not. That is not my background. My background is in urban planning, not finance. So, yes, I took ownership of the vote, and I'm saying that we have defenses to this. This is about going to court and saying, "No, we're not going to be doing this anymore, lying down and not doing what is best in the citizens' interest. We should not do this." And this is, again, step one of two, to get that on there. Now, Mr. Rodriguez is not going to be here, so he can, you know, say all these words, but we are going to still be here, and we're going to fight this. And I know that this is going to be a four-to-one vote. I know it, it's happened over and over again. And by the way, it has been a four-to-one vote in terms of going forward and building our park. We've got to get, remember that at the polls, please. Who stands for the community? Let's call for the question. Let's vote.
No. We only asked that to make it...
There, Councilmember Keim asked if the motion maker would modify his motion to include that, but it would need concurrence with the...
Yeah, actually...
Yes, I'll agree, because Jonathan said they'll do it anyway, so...
Actually, staff is already working on that. So, you know, it's kind of a weird thing to say, "Oh, let's see, maybe we can do this." We're already working on that. But when is that going to happen, really? Let's, let's...
The staff will be in 90 days, Mayor.
Well, is it an agreement? There's a motion, a second. Vote. And by the way, that was already going to happen.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Excuse me, mine is no.
Did you want to revote, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you don't support 90 days?
I don't support giving away land of the citizens of Oceanside.
We need to record the new vote, council. Okay. Councilmember Jensen, thank you. Motion approved, 4-1. Sanchez, no.
Thank you. Going back to public communications and off-agenda items, item number 16, do we have Susanna Medina? Okay. All right. So, next, we're going to take up item number 18. That's requested by Councilmember Jensen and Councilmember Rodriguez to direct staff to explore the feasibility of establishing a pilot dog beach program at the northernmost stretch of Harbor Beach, including potential options for limiting the days and hours of
Thank you. Is the public going to speak first, or are we going to speak?
No, go ahead. This is your item.
Okay. So, when the city conducted public outreach regarding our parks, the, one of the top items requested by the community was dog parks. High priority for dog parks, and nothing has been done since. So, we have been requested from the city, from the community, to allocate a portion of the Harbor Beach for specific hours to allow dogs to use the beach area. And I, personally, I believe that the, we already have a dog beach. I can sit in my kitchen and would see dogs on the beach all day long, every morning, every night. Our police and our lifeguards don't have the time to police dogs on the beach, and the obvious solution is to give the dogs a portion of the beach for specific times that they can legally access the beach. So, that is why we have brought this, and I think that, based on the emails that we received, we have a four-to-one in favor of this allocation, and I think that it's a good idea, and we should do it.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yeah, we received, and I don't know if this has been updated, just for the public, 62 emails in opposition and 231 in support. When Councilmember Jensen brought this forward, I'm a dog owner, I have four dogs, I have young kids. We're in a society, especially in Oceanside, where, you know, dogs like a family, family member, you know, it's another family member, and we bring our dogs everywhere, whether you go out to eat, all of our parks, you know, some of the concerns were, you know, "I have a two-year-old, and I don't want dogs running around." Well, I think this is going to be set up in a structured environment where this, you know, beta program is going to open the park during non-busy hours. Like, what I don't want to see is the busiest times of the weekend, when everybody's there, a dog park going on. I think that would be, you know, that would be causing some hindrances. But I do think it's appropriate to look at some reasonable hours, strict guidelines, you know, zero-tolerance policies, permitting, where they have maybe some sort of a caller tag that shows that they had, they've paid the permit. Maybe we can only open up to Oceanside residents out the gate as only an exclusive benefit, so we're not inviting neighbors. Look, my kids play on our parks, and I could tell you right now, there is, you know, dog feces and urine all over those parks. That get picked up, but it's in the ground, our kids are around it every day, and so that's an argument that I really don't necessarily agree with on some of the viewpoints. I'm just bringing up some of the arguments I've heard and my own personal experience. I think that this could be, we could, there's a lot of unknowns, and I think that's where the community's coming from, is there's unknowns, and they're looking at the extreme of those unknowns, and I think staff, in putting this program together, can charge a reasonable fee, have enough supervision, and isolate it to a window that can be monitored, and then we can actually see if it's really scary behind the closed door in the dark room when we turn the lights on. And that's all I would like to see. I think this would enhance our community. I only see opportunity in this, and I think with a sundown approach, where we start it now, we end it here, we come back for a review, then we go from there, I really don't see any harm in that. And so, that's why I would support this. I've had several conversations with the community, and I really think that this could enhance quality of life for Oceanside residents in a communal way with our, with our pets. Thank you.
How many requests do we have to speak?
We have 20 requests to speak on this item.
20? Okay, so we'll go to two minutes.
As I call your name up, we have two available podiums. As I call your name up, please make your way to the next available podium. And our speakers are Michelle Lustig, to be followed by John Granahan, who I think already left, to be followed by Mas Rosen, to be followed by Nancy Check, and you'll see the order up on the screens as well. Michelle.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, City Councilmembers and staff. My name is Michelle Lustig, and I've been involved in this current effort to establish an off-leash beach since its inception. But I'm not here today only as a member of an organization, I'm here as an Oceanside resident, a homeowner, and a constituent. For the past year, we've worked collaboratively with city staff, council members, and our entire community to take steps necessary to establish a dog beach. Nearly 8,000 people have signed our petition, and over 100 businesses in Oceanside and in the cities that surround us have also stepped up to support this effort. We have learned from our neighbors to the north and the south, we are not the first coastal city to try and establish a dog beach. We have, we're hoping that we can follow in the paths that have been carved by Fiesta Island in San Diego, and the dog beaches in Del Mar and Coronado are usually successful, monitored closely, and maintained extremely well. We know that concerns can be addressed, and negative impact, if there is any, can be mitigated. The benefits of having this regional resource will be felt on many levels. There'll be increased commerce, a positive economic impact, increase in positive attention for our city, alignment with our core belief that Oceanside is a forward-thinking, dog-friendly community. And the, and of course, additional facilities for families and their pets. Can't forget that part. Did hear earlier that not enough is being done for the residents of Oceanside. This is something that can be done for the residents of Oceanside. We are so grateful for the efforts underway to establish an off-leash dog park, but a city our size, where the majority of our residents own dogs, it's clear that we need several off-leash areas. I deeply believe in this proposal put forth by Councilmember Jensen and Rodriguez to initiate a pilot with limited hours. We have volunteers ready to go and clean up, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you.
John Granahan, I believe he's already left, will go with Mas Rosen.
Thank you.
Oh, I will turn that on.
Turn on that. Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers. Thank you for having us here for our second time. We appreciate very much that you've invited us back, that you see the benefits of this in our community. We see the benefits as well. We hear this every day, the counts that we've seen have been just amazing, how many people are supporting this thing. We know we're doing a dog park already. We agree with that, we support it 100%. Thank you for doing that. We know that it's already in progress, but we feel a beach is, we are a beach community. We need a dog beach. Where's that beach? We're only asking to share a portion of the beach for limited hours. The north jetty to Tower 18 is already a multi-use beach. We do sporting events, we do other city events there. There's so many things going on there that there's no reason it can't be used for other things. Get other community members there. If I'm not a surfer, that doesn't mean I can't go to that beach. I want to bring my, my children there, my animals there, and that just makes sense. We're only asking for 6% of the sandy beach. The remaining sand that we have, it's only 6%, and that would be shared only certain hours. So, if you do the math, it's a very little portion of time that we're asking for. Here's a map of our beaches. Green is sand, and red is not sand. At about Tyson Park here, we, we don't have sand anymore. Here's the relationship to the green, the sandy beaches. So, it's a very small portion. If we drill into that, it's only about 500 feet, 6% of our sandy beaches. How could we say no to something like that? This is the environmental impact, economic and enjoyment impact. Environmentally, we're working with the Coastal Commission already, we're working with other people, we're working with Humane Society, we're working to get this done to help augment and supplement the work that needs to be done in studies. I'll let other people here talk to us about the economic impact and the enjoyment impact. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I apologize in advance if I mispronounce anybody's name. All right, right on. To be followed by Lori Kuhn, to be followed by Matthew Rice.
Great. First, you know, thank you for the opportunity to become, to come here and be able to voice an opinion on this topic. With 20 people speaking, I know that you're going to hear a lot of the same things over and over again. You're going to hear about, you know, our enjoyment, our dogs being able to have, recreate in our way here in the city. You're going to hear about the economic impact of, you know, every day that we drive out of here to go take our dogs someplace else. But the one thing that I really wanted to stress is one about, we keep talking about a dog beach. This is about a beach for people to be able to enjoy and recreate their own way with their animals. So, it's really a people's beach where they can bring their dogs. And I think it's really important to stress that, because right now, I don't feel like the way that I like to recreate or exercise is being supported. You know, I'm having to leave the community in order to do that. And with that, I think I'm going to wave my time to the next speaker as well.
Thank you.
I'm from Fallbrook, where a lot of people own dogs. Fallbrook is 30 miles east of Oceanside. People would love to come from Fallbrook and the surrounding areas of Vista and San Marcos, spend their time with their dogs in Oceanside at a dog beach. This is San Diego County. We deserve to have a place to bring our four-legged furry friends, which I have four of, and those are my children. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Matthew Rice, to be followed by Nancy Maglio.
Thank you. Members, so I'm here really to try to ask for a fundamental mindset shift within the council. This isn't a bunch of whiny dog owners who just want a place for our dogs. We are homeowners, we are small business owners, we are entrepreneurs, we're investors, right? We see this as an opportunity for the city of Oceanside to create not just a service to our, our community, but an attraction. Bring people here. See how much Oceanside has changed in what, the last five, six years, right? Bring in tourism. has changed in what, the last five, six years, right? Bring in tourism. It's cheap. It's a couple signs, right? Compared to a dog park where you have to put up fencing and all kinds of other accoutrement, right? This is an easy win for our community to have one more reason when someone is going through the list of beachside cities of where do I want to spend my vacation dollars this year, right? One more bullet point. It's cheap. It's easy. Why wouldn't we take advantage of this amazing resource that we have? San Marcos, Vista, they can't create a dog beach. We can. Why aren't we taking advantage of this opportunity for the city, right, to create one more reason to come check out Oceanside and see what an amazing place this is to be? Thank you very much.
Honorable council members, Mayor Sanchez, my name is Nancy Malio. It's a beautiful, sunny, so-called day. At our home near the beach, a light breeze of sea air drifts as my husband and I prepare to have a beach day with our dog. Rather than walking over to the Oceanside Dog Beach, we get in our car and choose to either head 36 miles north to Laguna Beach's Heysler Park, 21 miles south to Del Mar, or even further to Fiesta Island or Ocean Beach. One might think the coast is beautiful everywhere. Why is it such a bother? Three words: economy, environment, and enjoyment. When we have a beach day with our dog, we have lunch as well. Rather than businesses in Oceanside benefiting from our money, we're forced to take our money elsewhere. Dogs are big business. This Halloween, Americans spent $490 million on costumes for their pets. Travel and Leisure published an article in June talking about the best dog-friendly beaches in the USA, and Huntington Beach was on that list. Why can't Oceanside? Events like Surf City Dog Surf bringing tourists and money. Isn't that what we're looking for in our local economy? Chewy.com released their list of best dog beaches, and Long Beach made it, followed by the suggestion to have lunch, rent a boat, make a day of it, stop for dessert before you leave Long Beach. Additionally, we're feeling the sting of prices at the pump. Why should we be paying for fuel to drive outside of our community to spend time the way we choose to recreate with our dogs? Environmental impact, congestion on the roads, the FINE, added pollution, added requirements for fuel. Shouldn't we be taking steps to alleviate damage to our environment, to alleviate the traffic by keeping locals local? It seems like a responsible thing to do. The environment. Living here should mean enjoying here. We see projects catering to tourists. For our economy, for our environment, and for our enjoyment, please say yes.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Wendy, and I live in Vista. And I am strongly in favor
of a dog beach. I recently had an off-leash dog beach, I should say, but I recently had some visitors come from out of state, and their number-one thing on their wish list was to take their dogs to an off-leash dog beach. Well, of course, they had to go 25 miles to Del Mar three times in one week because they liked it so much. And of course, we had to eat lunch every time we were taking our dogs out to the dog beach. And left a lot of money in Del Mar just taking our dogs to the beach and having lunch. So anyway, please consider an off-leash dog beach. Thank you.
Christiane Adamo, to be followed by Arlene Hammerschmidt.
Thank you. I don't have a big speech like everybody else. I just recently moved back to San Diego, grew up in Del Mar, moved to Atlanta, raised a family, would come back, came back 15 years in a row, brought a little dog, always went to the beach in Del Mar. It was wonderful. Loved it. Just recently moved back. I was at the beach two weeks ago, and I was, I learned that you cannot have dogs on the beach. I had no idea. I had no idea. I know, as ignorant as that is. But I just thought, this is really, I just recently learned about this situation of a dog beach, and I said, I'm just going to come and support it, because, you know, it's a great way. I just remember, Del Mar, everybody congregates, you know? I mean, people meet each other. It's sunny Southern California. I mean, we have a stretch of beach that we can give to these animals. And so please consider this. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable mayor, mayor and council, Arlene Hammerschmidt of ruralish Fire Mountain. I just have a couple questions. Wasn't this investigated like three years ago, in 2019, by staff? I believe it was. What did staff find three years ago? What has changed in the regulations since that time, when it went nowhere three years ago? This is a waste, in my opinion, of staff time and money of the city in salaries. And I, for one, would like to see that money instead invested in dog parks all over the city. Everywhere, all over the city. Close to where people live, you don't have to drive from Southmore Hills to the beach. You don't have to drive from out in, by Lake Avenue to the North Jetty if there's a dog park close. So it's environmentally more friendly to have them everywhere. And if Parks and Recreation has deleted that from the master plan, that is a mistake. We don't need fewer dog parks. We need more parkland, and included in that, Parks for Dogs. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ashley Jackson. I'm an Oceanside resident. I live right on the Strand, down the street over here. And I have a dog that, because of my dog, I have very special friends in my life. I met these friends through dog parks, actually, dog beach. And, you know, like a lot of people were saying, our dogs are like our family now, you know? I'm a widow. I'm 55. We got my dog when my husband committed suicide because that was something that was good for our family. So she's very much a part of our family. She goes everywhere with us. She's a big 75-pound German Shepherd Rottweiler mix. She is the sweetest dog on earth. Dog parks, I choose to have my private practice for my work in Del Mar because I take my dog with me. And I go spend my money in Del Mar for breakfast, for lunch, for dinner, because that's where I can take my dog. I wish we had a dog beach here in Oceanside, because I could bring my business here. But I can't work in Oceanside because I want to have my dog with me, because she makes me happy, and she makes my patients happy, and she's a part of our family and a part of our lives. Dog beach in Del Mar, I'm there every single day. There's no problems. There's no problems. People pick up their poop. I see more crap on the beach in Oceanside from people than I ever see from any dog owner. There's needles. There's beer cans. There's diapers with shit in them, all right? There's food wrappers. There's beer, I mean, drugs. There's all kinds of stuff. I never see a dog poop anywhere. There's dog poop bags everywhere. And if somebody sees a dog poop, you know what they do? If it's not their dog's, we pick it up, because we're responsible. Let us have a dog beach, please.
Honorable council members, my name is Bob Walker. I live in Oceanside. I'm here to ask you not to approve the dog beach at the harbor. I'm sure we've heard a lot of people talk about the Del Mar beach. The difference between Del Mar beach is the sand gets washed at every high tide. We live here at the Oceanside Harbor. We have lots of sand, and that all remains, a lot of it remains dry during high tide. Well, if you were to approve that to be a dog beach, it'll be a lot more like Ocean Beach, which is down in San Diego. By the way, I used to surf that a lot. Nobody puts their towels out on the beach at Dog Beach in Del Mar. I mean, in, down in OB. And I, when I went to San Diego State, I was down there all the time. I'd always walk around the beach and then paddle out. And that's just the way it is. And so that beach is so similar to, the dog beach in OB is very similar to the dog beach up here, because we have the dry sand that never sees the water, so it never gets washed. And what we'll have, if we were to approve that, what we're going to have is, we're going to have a large beach that will turn, will become a large dog litter, litter box out there. And with the smells that come from that beach, I promise you, nobody's going to put their towels on that beach. That, even everybody picks up their dog, or picks up after their dogs, you can't pick up the urine that's left behind. And that's the smell that you always, always smell. And so I suggest maybe what we do is we look at south of Tyson Street, and we can, we can open that up in the summer or in the mornings, and in the evenings during, it'd have to be minus tide, because there is no sand down there, but it will get washed. Thank you.
How would it be if that dog ripped that dog's collar right off? What if it would have been a kid? And we know how popular North Jetty is, Tower 18, whatever you want to call it. It's a heavily impacted beach with a lot of people. I sure wouldn't want my grandchild sitting down to eat her sandwich in the same place where a dog just peed or pooed two hours ago. So, dog parks, yes, they're for dogs. Keep those kids off the same place where the dogs are going pee and poo. Thank you.
Joe Hill, to be followed by Bob Ashton, to be followed by Shannon Bryant.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Joe Hill, 22-year resident. A quick summary of the dogs facility study that you have in your packages. It was, as part of the 2122 CIP budget, the dog park study was approved. You folks asked for additional public outreach on the top three: Buddy Todd, Mance, and Ron Ortega. And according to the memo, sometime this year, in the summertime, everything was finalized, and we should be ready to go for the top three dog parks, which are already in the 2223 budget for design and construction. You've already approved all of this for three dog parks. So I'm not sure if, maybe the city manager can tell us where we are on that. Last December, you gave direction to the staff to investigate a dog beach, but the budgeted funding wasn't enough to cover the beach part of the dog park study, so they have to do that separately. A complete study is going to cost $150,000, require Coastal Commission Development Plan and permit, a sequin analysis, 14 additional criteria, including state and federal agencies, that could require future city mitigation. Based on Del Mar beach information, which you have in your packet, maintenance costs could be $20,000 a year. In closing, staff has already studied regular dog parks. They are planned for at least three locations, so let's move on those. Instead, the proposal is to contaminate, poison, pollute, and destroy Oceanside's best and only beach that always has sand, always has people, always has surfers. The only beach in the city. Every, all the other beaches have a problem. I just find it amazing that the two council members, one who's leaving and one who may not be here next year, are still proposing such an expensive, unpopular, and totally uncertain plan, and you guys have to approve $150,000 just for the study, when regular dog parks are ready to go. By the way, Charles Spad turned this proposal down in 2018.
Thank you.
And Ms. Jensen is using it as her campaign.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, city council, city staff, and fellow citizens. We're talking about the beach, one of my favorite topics. All sides are being heard here tonight regarding the dog beach proposal, and that's a cool thing. Amy and I have a pack of three dogs. Normally, we're down to two, so we're down one. So if you have an extra one, let us know. They get our love, attention. We take them to many dog venue places that are dog-friendly, hiking. But in the end, they're dogs. And maybe we're bad dog owners, but we don't take them everywhere. We only have dry sand on 1.7 miles of our 3.7-mile shoreline. That means 46% of our shoreline is available for our citizens to recreate on. We have a population of 177,000 people. And if you do the math, that means 104,000 fellow citizens per mile of beach. But that doesn't even include our inland neighbors like Fallbrook, and Vista, and San Marcos, and Escondido, and the Inland Empire people who come here on train every weekend of the summer. We see them. They're here, right? But, you know, there's also an issue of sanitation, and people have already spoken to that. Where we hike and where we recreate, I'm constantly picking up dog poop. It's not coyote poop. I know the difference, okay? And these are places that are established for dogs to go, and the dog owners are not all responsible. And our young ones crawling through it, not a good idea. Having dogs on a concentrated area of our beach is not a good plan. For now, I'd have to ask a city council not to let our beaches go to the dogs. Rather, focus our staff's attention, our money, and our, and our energy on restoring sand to our beach.
Yes.
Once sand's restored to our beach, then let's bring this issue back up and do it in a responsible manner. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Shannon Bryant. I'm a resident of Oceanside, and I'm just going to put this blamer out. I'm really neutral on this topic. But I do believe in being fiscally responsible with our tax dollars and making sure that we have informed decision-making. I don't know all the details of the prior studies and everything that happened, but I do recommend that we collectively put it all together and study if we actually need a beach location, what are the criteria for determining where that location will actually be. What I saw when I looked at the agenda today was it was just identified for this particular beach. As a planner, now professionally and a former federal regulator, I don't know the background in all of this, but I do, again, believe in informed decision-making. And in looking at the material, what I saw was that we pre-identified, we were arbitrarily cautious in determining that it should be this location. As a biologist, as a marine biologist, I'll also tell you that that's an awesome sand dollar bank right off of that beach. It's a wonderful beach commerce paradise to go through there. I do also appreciate that beach for recreating myself and going to the fire rings and things like that. So again, I don't know what the background was on making this kind of pre-decisional determination that it should be that location. And again, please, no one attack me. I'm sorry that things are so adversarial over some of these topics tonight, but just do a complete study of all possible locations. Do an addendum to the previous study to determine why it has to be a beach location, and if so, what the criteria are for that, is all I would like to see with my tax dollars and everyone else's. Again, I am an animal lover. I have pets of my own. Just that we do this the right way, not just on a contentious vote, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Hi. Hi. My name is Steve Manchu. I'm with, at North Coast Village, and I'm a member of Save Oceanside Sand. Completely back up, agree with what Bob told you about this, about the loss of sand and the need for more sand, et cetera. I sent the council back in December, my idea for a, another location, in unused land over by, over by the yacht club. And you have all the slides and suggestions for that location. It's unused beachfront area. It isn't on a beach, but it is almost exactly the same configuration as what Kids Cove is, just around the corner in Camp Pendleton, where they have a jetty. They, there's a revetment, but they covered it completely with sand and brought it down. Makes a real nice area. It would keep the animals separate from humans on the beach, because it's a completely separate area. because it's a completely separate area. And I think it's a real good idea. I hope you did look at my slides. I never got any feedback from anybody that you received them. But I think it's clearly an alternative location, and it would pay for itself. I'm really agreement that it is a great tourism attraction. It's something we really need in Oceanside, but not on our best beaches. We need to keep it separate. This is a perfectly good area, separate from where the rest of the beach users would be. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Sean Goit. I'm a 30-year resident here in Oceanside. And I don't see what the harm a dog beach would be. I hope you guys will vote for it. First time I ever owned a dog, 60 years old, before I ever got a dog. And I, and he loves the beach, and he wants to go down there.
Hi, Joan Bachman, longtime resident. I grew up with the dog. She died when she was 16 and I was 14. So, I'm aware of people having dogs, okay? I also have allergies. And I've had to avoid that dog the whole time I've been in this room. If you're wearing a fur coat, I'd also be avoiding you. But last time I was on that beach, I was with a group called Hands of Peace. It was 30 Palestinian and Israeli youths that came together to work on peace. I could not have gone to that party with dogs running all over the place. And no, they don't follow the rules. They are there all the time. And I'm telling them, "Don't let your dog touch me because I'm wearing sandals." They still let their dogs ride up to me. So, I guess my question is, how many people in this room are willing to invite me over to come do my business in your front yard? And I'll clean it all up. Would you ever touch that part of your yard again? Probably not. With all these dogs, we're hearing about 80% of people here have dogs, apparently. Shouldn't we be treating it like the sewage that it is? It is not good for habitat. I'm cleaning up dog feces all the time at the nature center. You know, I'm out there putting my hands in dirt on a regular basis. And it is just not okay. They don't follow rules. And I think we can see that right here. So, please, treat it as human feces. Deal with that problem. Then you can start expanding where it goes. We need to change dog culture. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leo Noble. I'm a longtime resident. I'm 18 years old. I was born here in Tri-City. My parents, my mom right here has been here for 24 years. My grandma lived in Laguna growing up, and she had a dog beach. It was kind of just unmonitored. She would have to, you know, clear a spot in the sand from the dog poop just to put her towel down. Same points these people have made as well. At Lincoln Middle School, there were dogs allowed there quite a bit ago. I'm not sure if there are now. I used to play lacrosse there when I was in middle school. Dogs would be running everywhere. They're supposed to be on leashes. They weren't. They're supposed to pick up dog poop. They would not. We had a case where a dog peed on a kid's lacrosse bag, and the owner never even came up to say anything about it. One of the moms had to chase it down and figure out who it was. Another point, the kids at the harbor, there's a lot of them. Biggest beach in Oceanside, California. All the rest of the beaches have shrunk. But if a kid is sitting there playing in the sand, and there's just a piece of dog poop next to them, if they don't know what's going on, what's stopping them from putting that in their mouth? As a kid, I would dip crackers in the sand and eat them. You know, that's my mom here. With the economic impact, I really doubt more people are going to come here. I feel like more people are going to leave than come here because it's going to be one youth beach for dog owners, and that's it. I've been serving for about 10 years now. I'm not sure if you guys have been to the harbor at all or looked at the water. The water swirls. Next to the jetty goes out, kind of points that direction. There's a right and a left point out there at the end. Catch a right, you paddle onto the inside, and the inside just sweeps all the way through. It just creates a swirl effect. Any poop that would be kind of washed out there would just sit there and swirl. It would not go out to sea like in Del Mar. I have personally been down to the San Diego Dog Beach for a surf contest. I went down, I was across that little jetty. But there's dog poop all up in the water. I stepped on it myself. There's just tons of people having issues with that kind of thing down there. And I just really don't think it'd be a good idea. The pier is shrinking as well. The water reached the playground the other day for the first time, and I don't even know how long. I don't see any sand coming anytime soon. I know we're fighting for it, but I don't see it coming at all.
Excuse me, excuse me, thank you. You can run, you can wind your comments down. Excuse me, I really enjoy having youth come and speak. So, I apologize, but please finish your comments. Thank you.
8,500 out of 180,000 people here voted for that. The rest of them didn't, you know, the rest of the citizens. 100 businesses out of 7,000 agree with it. I just really don't think it's a great idea. I don't feel like sharing a beach with a bunch of dogs. Junior guards run their practices there. All kinds of surf camps, surf rides, surf camp, junior guards, kids running all over that beach 24/7 in the summer. Four days a week, five days a week.
Thank you. And I want to say, I know that was, that took a lot of courage to come up and speak, especially on a controversial issue, and especially when you're 18. So, thank you very much. Back to the council. Councilmember Rodriguez.
City staff, quick question. What sort of studies and timelines? Let's say we had, you had support from council. Let's just assume you have support from council. And there wasn't an election in a week. What are the timelines for something like this? And estimated cost, so to speak? What would be realistic timeline to get something like this, you know, up and running, let's say?
So, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, as some people alluded to during their comments, at one point, we did report back to council on this topic. At that time, we estimated it would be approximately $150,000 to complete the studies. It would be necessary to analyze the impacts of a beach, a dog beach, because of some of the technical studies that would need to be done, you know, in terms of potential biological impact studies, you know, potential water pollution studies and so forth. To answer your question in terms of timeline, one of the difficult challenges here is, as was also alluded to in our prior correspondence, is the fact that it requires a coastal development permit, which of course requires a review by the Coastal Commission. I would say, based on our recent experiences in terms of the timelines associated with Coastal Commission review, we're probably looking at about a two-year process, I would say, because we have applications now that are backed up with the Coastal Commission that they've been sitting on for two and three years. So, I would say that realistically, that's about what we would be looking at.
Okay, so, a couple hundred grand, two years before we even issue our first permit and have our first dog on the beach.
Could we have a question?
John Mullen, I have a question for you, Mr. Mullen. What, from ballot box, ballot box dynamics, would this be something that the citizens of Oceanside could put on the ballot? And, or is that not even feasible? Like, what would that look like? Just, is that something realistic that the citizens could put on the ballot for a future vote? And with the studies that are required, how does that even work?
Well, you'd have to do these technical studies first. I mean, I don't think a vote could override the need for technical studies. And to the extent that we'd have to review a coastal development permit, that would have to be done by council and could not be done by the voters. Theoretically, you could put an advisory question before the voters at an appropriate election. But of course, there's deadlines related to that that have obviously long since passed. But for a future election, you could put an advisory question forward.
All right. So, here's where I'm at with it. You know, we got to see the writing on the wall. And we have an election in a week. And I don't care if we get, we get three votes here. It's all going to be in vain if, if the mayor and the two sitting councilmembers are not on board. So, I want to hear what they have to say. Because if there's not strong political will on this, guys, this is really just a waste of time. And so, that's kind of where I stand on this. So, I want to know if these three support it. Otherwise, this is just going to have to be something that comes up later.
Before we do any other discussion, we really ought to have a motion on the floor so that we can discuss the motion. So, is there a motion on the floor?
I will make a motion.
Okay, is there a second? Are you making a second?
I want to hear comments before I, a motion is made. I want to hear comments from my colleagues.
I need a motion and a second. Otherwise, the motion dies for lack of a second.
How are we able to speak? Do you not want to speak? You guys don't want to speak? If they don't want to speak, this is dead. So, let's just, let's just move on.
Is there, is there a second? Are you seconding this motion?
I'm not seconding anything unless these two speak. And you. Do you support this, Mayor?
I'll speak.
Okay.
But I would like to have a motion. It would be nice. We usually do have a motion for discussion, rubber's rules, you know? Okay, Deputy Mayor Keim.
Unfortunately, I don't, I don't think this had to be an adversarial topic. I don't think anyone here has bad intentions. We just have different experiences. I, for one, have been going to North Jetty since I was very small. I learned how to surf there. I take my family there multiple times a week. I'm in favor of a dog beach, but not there. It's, and I want to paint the picture for you. We have a playground just up the beach from it. We have volleyball courts. We have junior lifeguards, which my daughters are part of. We have multiple surf camps. I see instructors here today. We have children up and down. And there's no, and I hear there's off-season. There is really no off-season there. We have moms and strollers with their kids on the beach in the wintertime, in the mornings, in the afternoons. In Oceanside, we had an issue with our fenced dog park and issues that we couldn't even have it. So, to think that we could make this successful in that area, I think it's going to be extremely challenging. I don't think it's feasible. I, I'm not opposed to a dog beach. I would like to tie it into our sand project. As soon as we get the sand project over the finish line and we have our three and a half miles of sandy beaches back, we can figure out somewhere that has better geographic boundaries. So, whether it's revetment going, so stopping dogs from running into the parking lot in the street, or where it's right next to a playground. I mean, that's one of my biggest concerns is you have, and I think this is what you see here tonight, is we have responsible dog owners, but we have to manage and make policy for those that are not responsible, who are going to let their dogs run. They're not going to see where they go to the bathroom. They're not going to manage them when they go into the playground. And that's an issue we're going to have to deal with year-round. And I just, I think it's a recipe for disaster at that location. So, I'm willing to entertain it, not tonight, but as soon as we have our sand program implemented. And then we can have a better location down south and maybe share part of it with Carlsbad. I mean, they have six miles of beaches, six groynes. You know, we can make a motion to do it at Tamarack. But, you know, obviously, we don't have that ability. So, it's... And for those of you here with a sand project, Carlsbad did oppose any sand project we're doing right now. So, but that's something, I just think at North Jetty, it's absolute wrong location for this right now. And it's not about dog beaches in general or dogs. It's just that spot at this time. So, I am not in favor of it.
All right. There's already a motion by Councilmember Jensen. Is there a second?
No, it just, it's going to be in vain, you guys. This needs to come back up later, unfortunately.
Okay.
Thank you.
This motion dies for a second.
Thank you for everyone who came out in support of this. There's a lot of supporters and, you know, good feedback from the public. Thank you, guys, for coming out. We tried.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda are items, comments from the public on items not on the agenda.
We have currently nine speakers.
Nine?
Nine.
Okay, let's get started. Let's take a five-minute break, please. Let's go ahead and resume the meeting, please. Thank you. We were on speakers on items not on the agenda. You want to go ahead and start calling?
Yes. We actually have eight speakers. One speaker signed up twice. So, as I call your name, there's two available podiums. Please make your way down. Our first speaker is Teri Jean Jenkins, to be followed by Michael Berg, if they are still here. All right, then we'll move on to Arlene Hammerschmidt. Oh, and we have somebody trying to sign up right now.
What was that?
There is somebody trying to sign up as I activated the item. Yeah. But we'll start with...
Ms. Hammerschmidt? Okay.
Good evening, Arlene Hammerschmidt. Again, Roilish Fire Mountain. Honorable councilmembers, an ounce of prevention is still worth a pound of cure. Full-on parks and recreation programming in community centers and parks equals prevention. Before shuttering the Junior Seale Beach Community Center and taking out one of two community centers, the responsible action is to complete one or more new full-service community centers to be open when the Junior Seale one is closed for renovation. Last Wednesday, October 26, at council's workshop, Councilmember Weiss said that he couldn't imagine where in the city we could build another community center. Yet, yet he is given acknowledgement. Acknowledgement for this plan of 2019. In this master plan, it identifies vacant land in Oceanside where exactly any community center could possibly be built. This is, I'm not sure how many of you this is vacant anymore, but this plan has been done in smart growth opportunity area. So, let's not say that I can't imagine where, let's imagine. We don't need to imagine. It's on a map. That's where community centers could be built. And they need to be built before any closure for renovation of the beach community center is started. Are we acting like our point, did our appointed acting mayor ignore this? Or maybe we're being blinded by developers' racket of bonus density in return for 10% of low-income units. That 10% is never going to solve our Rena housing needs. Do the math. We'll always be lacking by design. This charade is disgusting because our kids are the losers here. One of the most effective methods of increasing residents' quality of life overall is investing in full-service parks and recreation. Invest in prevention, prevention, and prevention, and save on the cures of intervention, incarceration, and rehabilitation.
Thank you.
I challenge you to summon your political will for the residents' health and well-being, otherwise known as quality of life. Please.
Jose Ureña? Joan Bachman?
Hello, I'm back. Joan Bachman. I want to talk about two things. One is there's a spot on El Corazon that is unprogrammed because you took ownership of it from the hotel developer over objections because now we have to pay for the roundabout. But anyway, there's a spot there. That could be a dog park. It better not become parking because there is acres of parking on El Corazon. And like my neighborhood where people walk blocks to their parking spot from their homes, please do not make that into parking for Ventana. That is not available. And it could be a dog park because it's now unprogrammed land that was just given back to the city for the benefit of a developer. I wanted to point that out. The second thing I wanted to point out is that, I've heard this many times. And Peter, you've been in the city from the, an engineer to city engineer to city manager to mayor to councilmember, yet nothing ever sticks. And tonight, we heard a live from Mr. Rodriguez saying that Peter wasn't there. He was there in some capacity. He's been there on everything in some capacity. So, I'm, I've tried to get things done through you before, and it's been like Teflon. Nothing sticks. So, I would like to see that change, like about taking ownership. Let's take ownership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Esther. I wasn't here last week due to the fact... to the fact that I take care of my mother part-time, and it's hard for me to get down here for meetings. But I would like to talk about the agenda that was, that passed last meeting. And I have very big concerns because when I was driving on the 78, 78 East, and I go out to Morel Hills a lot because that's where my mom works, and I take the 78, I did notice the airline accident that happened. And I am very concerned, and I emailed Rust right away and saying, what's the airport plans, the, the land use plan thing? And I went through it, and I was just like, wait, 2010? 2010? That was 20 years ago. And now we are having future development all around. And I just, I couldn't believe it. 2010. And we're in 2020, what? I'm going, where, where's an updated plan? We, we need to know what the airport's future is going to be around these master developments. It's way out of date. We need that first before we can bring in future projects. Because we're having incidents. And if another company comes in and rents out another, another hangar or whatever, and, or if Palomar decides to say no more thick-wing little planes, and we're the only airport, we, we don't know what this future is. And I would really like to see what, what's going to happen to our airport. Or are we closing? Are we continuing? Where are we on this? And so that was kind of the concern with me. And I'm going, I, I, I don't know. I mean, I was just shocked that that passed, but I understand. That was a beautiful project, but I just feel it, it's not in the right area. It is a beautiful project. We need something like that. Totally. I'm agreeing. I'm on board. But near the airport, I just don't know. It's a big risk. And knowing what the future of the airport stands. So if you could possibly look into that, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So today, I'd like to talk about Eric Joyce. So he has been sitting on our school board for the last four years. And if you go onto the California Education website, you can see the financial report for our schools. And you can see the ones that make the list here are have a negative or qualified certification based on their budget. So you can see right over here that Oceanside unified made the list and have a budget of $304 billion that our school board members are trusting. And yet, at the last point here, Eric Joyce has been on the board. We have been near the brink of bankruptcy. So I just want to point out his fiscal irresponsibility, yet he wants to come and work for our beautiful city here and handle a bigger $100 million budget. So here we can see how our, our staff, our school staff is paid. Every year, they get a 3% raise. Our school board voted for bonuses in teacher raises and bonuses for our superintendent. So our superintendent makes over $400,000, including all of her supplemental insurance and everything else. And our teachers make $120,000, all while our kids' test scores are in the tank in 30 and 40%. So I see that our board members are completely irresponsible with money, with their kids' futures. And yet Eric Joyce wants to sit here on our council. Also, you can see, you can see here that he voted to give Stacy D. an $5,000 grant as well. And also, I would like to point out, during the time when our kids in our lower income needed buses, our school board decided to take money away from our kids and do budget cuts to our disadvantaged neighborhoods and take the bus as well. So this is the responsibility we're talking about. There's $5,000 to Stacy D. and also he has an agenda that is for a minority of the population. Now, I'm not against the LGBT community, but I am against my hard-earned dollars working to push this agenda. I'd also like to show you the video of his...
Thank you, ma'am.
...to leave home, cross imaginary border.
Ma'am, thank you.
So that is an imaginary border that he talks about. Sorry, but we don't have an imaginary border.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you.
We have a real border.
Thank you.
Pat Kaye? Okay, I think I'm, yes, this is Patty Kaye. Made a mention previously that this public discussion that we witnessed over the last couple of years, I do not feel that, I think it is under the guise of free speech. And I think it's harassment and personal attacks under that guise. And I personally would like to ask the mayor, since she'll be here a few more years, to better control that. And please try not to bring in political bias to, you know, something like this. But since it's already been going on, I will continue for tonight. Please have the people in, in your area in District One stop trashing the signs, the candidate signs that are on the other candidates, because there's only one candidate sign left standing. So it's pretty obvious that this is a political stunt in that neighborhood on the east side. Also, everyone is so concerned about the youth. That is a topic in, in the candidate's profile and, and wanting to enhance the youth to, for the future of our city. And yet this candidate, Eric, continues to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on the school board for programs that are ineffective with declining scores. And, and quite frankly, the, the latest score are even less, and by all standards are an F, as we knew it when we went to school. The latest scores are, I believe, close to 34% achievement in the language and 28 at the most in math. And that's doing a total disservice to our youth. So let's, going forward, try and keep these discussions on a non-political bias and non-favoritism, which I think has obviously been seen and alluded to by the volunteers for the other candidate who come here and trash, make personal trash remarks at the council meetings. So Mayor, can you, can you guarantee me that that will be a bit of adjustment in the general discussion going forward?
Oh, the only person I've been, I'm seeing trash tonight is one candidate who's not here.
Yeah, well, we know who the supporters are for that candidate.
So if you want me to stop you from talking about him, I'm happy to do that.
What? You want to talk about him? But no, and, and I, I appreciated your defense of Victor Roy when, when nothing had been...
Thank you very much.
And you allow other people to finish. So I appreciated that defense of Victor Roy when nothing had been decided.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
But I wish you would have been equal to Corey Jensen over the past two years.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Callie O'Neill. I am, Oceanside is my hometown. And I just have a few questions. I don't know if you're allowed to answer here. But I was at the last planning commission, and it had to do with Skylark and Crouch, the new project by the JPI is putting in. And so after that meeting, I went in, I did, I did a little research, and I found out a few things that I don't know if are true or not. So I'm here to ask you if it's true. So this is about the housing element and the general plan and a couple of bills authored by ex-assemblyman David Chu that remove power from our local elected officials, and, which means us too, our citizens, and gives the power to the developers in the state, power to decide what our neighborhoods should look like and feel like. Developers from out of state, developers from Texas, developers from China, and even Mexico, they have more power in some situations than we do, than you do. So I don't know if this is true. So there's Assembly Bill 72. It gives, passed in 2017, it gives power to the California Department of Housing and Community to tattletale on our elected officials, to the Attorney General, if we don't follow the state's vision for our beach town. I don't know if that's true. So then there's Assembly Bill 1763. It's also known as Chapter 666, which I found was a strange coincidence. But it takes the power away from our local elected officials and local citizens, and it gives it developers, it gives the power to the developers to decide the density and height of a project. And I think that's what's going on in Skylark and Crouch and Grandview and all over our city. So I want to know if this is true. I found letters from other mayors and councilmen that asked Governor Newsom to veto this bill back in 2019. And I want to know if anyone of our elected officials did that. It also, 1763 also allows developers to override the so-called DHC-approved plan. So why do we have to get the plan approved from the DHC if the developers can override it? I don't know if that's true, but that's the, that's what I found out, that, that's what these guys are talking about in, in the letters that I have right there. And also get, 1763 also gives transit agencies power to over, power over our local officials, over you guys, to, and us, which means us, to determine how to use the land near major transit stops and high-quality transit corridors. And those transit corridors, I'm realizing, is a fancy euphemism, which I'm starting to see, it's a red marker where a developer from another state or country is cutting up our hometown, how they see fit. So I have more to say, but I'll save it for another meeting. But thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, we're on general councilmember comments. Any requests to speak? I see no lights. I would like to ask your city clerk to talk a little bit about, election day is Tuesday, November 8. And where can people vote or drop off their ballots?
One of the locations that we can drop off our ballots is the Center of Library. One of the locations I drop off my ballots there is... If I had my microphone on.
Yes, thank you very much.
You think all those years in radio, I would learn. But for those of you that would wish to vote, you could mail your ballot in or drop off your ballot at any ballot box. Make sure that it's an official ballot box with the San Diego County Register of Voters. It is safe. It is secure. You will see that the ballot box is sealed with a unique barcode, and it is collected. And once your ballot is collected, it will be scanned. So think of it like an Amazon package. You could track it. You could get alerts to your phone. Or you could go and show up on election day. You could go to sdvote.com to look at all the ballot places and polling places where you could drop off your ballot or vote in person. But most importantly, regardless of who you vote for or where you lie on the political spectrum, the most important thing is to vote and to encourage your friends, neighbors, and family to go out and vote.
So we will be having voting centers open over the weekend and through?
All the way up until election day.
So Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday.
All the way up until election day, and the polls close Tuesday at 8 o'clock PM.
Right. And what time do they open Saturday, Sunday, and Monday? And then what time do they open on Tuesday?
That would be great information to know. But unfortunately, I don't have that information in front of me. But you could always go to sdvote.com for election information on where to vote, as well as accessible voting for those with disabilities. But definitely, sdvote.com is the website you need to go to, to get some more information on when the voting centers are open, the location of voting centers. And you could always go to the Register of Voters in San Diego, even on election night, to see the ballots being counted and processed. And they encourage members of the public to come out, and it's a very transparent process.
Great, thank you. I did hear, just a really quick comment here. I did hear some comments...
I did hear some comments about busing in Oceanside. And unfortunately, the conversation I had was with our city manager, who is then Deanna Lorsen, and how can we help, can we work with the school district in continuing busing, especially for the Crown Heights kids? And unfortunately, the response we got was, there was new legal advice that busing would have to be to the entire, offered to the entire student body. Otherwise, they could look, they could be looking at a lawsuit. And so it was a very, very difficult situation. I know that one of the things we tried to do is reach out to the Boys and Girls Club, which does have a shuttle, but they were not willing to do that. This is something that obviously is not just the, an issue for the school district. It's also our issue as well, because until our kids get onto the school grounds, the kids are our, our families and our, our issues for the city of Oceanside. So, but anyway, good luck to everyone. I, you know, Eric is a good friend of mine. And anyway...
Voting centers open at 8:00 AM, and on election day, they open at 7:00 AM.
There you go.